I'll introduce our speaker momentarily, but I just want to say a few things. It's critical that we understand the financial situation of the university as the coalition of unions here tries to negotiate new contracts. We're fighting hard for a number of priorities and for the university to invest in the things that we think are important, the things that make a difference for our students, that make Rutgers a reasonable place to work. So, learning about the financial situation of the university is critical and demonstrating that you support these priorities, whether we're talking about ensuring enough investment in Camden and Newark campuses, whether we're talking about job security for current NTT and adjunct faculty, whether we're talking about equal pay for equal work for part timers, whether we're talking about a living wage for grad workers, whether we're talking about tenured faculty having the support they need to do their research and to spend their grants in ways that really support the mission of the university. We have so many priorities and we hope to see all of you next Friday, a week from today, actually, at this time. We'll be making our voices heard at the State of the University address. We'll be standing together with our students who will be there also speaking out for climate justice, which is a critical priority for us. And we hope to see many of you there. So I'm going to ask one of our amazing union staff to put that in the chat. Alan did read my mind. And what I'm going to do now is before I introduce Howard, just give a few of the other coalition union presidents 30 seconds to a minute to talk about who they represent and what their particular priorities are. I, I, and while we're doing that, I would encourage all of you to introduce yourselves in the chat. You could say your name, your pronouns, your campus, maybe if you're in a campus union or if you're a student, you could say so, but please go ahead and get to know each other in the chat. I am going to pass to somebody I got to see in person this week. My, my sister president Christine O'Connell, she represents U R A and is fantastic union leader on our, on our campus. So go ahead, Christine.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to join us today. My name is Christine O'Connell. I, we represent over 2,600 administrative staff. I focus on the word staff because there'll be some, in the presentation will be conversation about administrators. I don't want us to be confused with, but we, we do, we are the backbone of the university. And we have been negotiating, trying to negotiate a successor contract for months with very slow or no progress. Right? And I think thanks to Howard, this presentation will prove that our demands are not crazy and unachievable because Rutgers has the money. Our priorities include salary increases, compensation for increased workload, which many of us have seen due to the increased amount of vacancies as well as retention and recruitment problems across the university. And most recently, health insurance relief, right? Because the premiums are, are going up significantly. So, you know, we, we want everyone on this to understand that we're in this together. And that these are direct management choices and they choose to not value our work collectively. Right? And the work that we do makes this university run. So thank you for giving me the time to, to say a few words and welcome to everyone.
Thank you so much, Christine. I want to next hand to Amy Heiger, president of our adjunct faculty union, another wonderful partner in this joint work that we're doing as a coalition. So thanks for being here, Amy.
Thanks, Becky, and thanks, Christine. It's good to see everybody. I'm really excited to hear this talk. I'm the president of a union that represents about 2,700 adjunct faculty at Rutgers. We teach over 30% of the classes, but that underestimates our role at the university. It's tens of thousands of students every semester. Many of us, about two thirds of us, do this work full time, although we don't get paid full time. We are called part time and that's misleading. We don't have health insurance. We get rehired each and every semester. We don't know whether we're going to be working sometimes until right before the semester starts. This is a bad way to treat teachers. It's terrible for students. Rutgers has the money to pay us. It refuses to do so because it's in their interest to keep us as flexible as possible. So what we're fighting for in this contract campaign is a living wage, equal pay for equal work, since we teach exactly the same courses as our full-time colleagues teach, we should get paid on the same scale that they are, they get paid. We are fighting for job security and longer-term contracts and for healthcare for those of us who need it. So really looking forward to this presentation. Thanks so much. Good to see everybody.
Thank you so much, Amy. And then briefly Kathy Monteleone is here. She's the president of our sibling union that represents biomedical faculty. And I should say, we hope to move forward as one faculty with full-time, part-time biomedical so-called legacy altogether. So thanks, Kathy.
Hi, I'm Dr. Catherine Monteleone. I'm the president of A U P B H S and J. You know, we have a lot of the same issues as everyone. They, when we even pay us at the 25th percentile of standard for those of us in our different roles at the school, we have very short length of contracts. Many of our faculty are just assistant professors. We don't have a lot of tenure and they just get one-year contracts. So we've tried for several contracts now to increase that, that time length of contract and have had not much success. So we hope for that. We have high fringe rate on our researchers and it's, you know, workload has become a really big problem because of lack of retention of people within our school. So it's a lot of the same issues. We have been very lucky to be able to work with all of you on this contract as we go forward because we're all in the same boat with Rutgers and I think we can all help each other. Thanks.
Thanks Kathy. And I will say that there's some wonderful leaders from some of our other unions that are also here and some of them will speak in the session on Monday, but some of them have already introduced themselves in the chat and others should definitely, should definitely do so. I really appreciate moving forward in this work as a, as a coalition. It's, it's really, it's really makes all the difference in terms of where, where, where we're going to end up in the, in this contract campaign. So one other acknowledgement I really have to give, I guess it's two acknowledgements. One is to our amazing union staff. Alan Moss and Sherry Wolf have been instrumental in pulling this work together, but if you have worked with any member of our union staff, you know, they're absolutely the best in the business. Patrick Nolan has, has kept things humming and kept good relationship with Howard going for many, many years at this point. And I also want to acknowledge our, our union's university budget and policies committee. This is a committee that was formed a few years ago to really look more deeply into the work that, that into the finances, into the policies of the university. You may have seen their response to the university's R C M report. I know several members of the committee are here. I'll call out some names. I'm sorry if I don't, if I don't see all of you, but certainly Michelle Gittleman, Troy Shinbrot, Andrew Goldstone has done amazing work on that committee, Juan Gonzalez and others, and we're so grateful for their work. I will give Howard a very brief introduction because I could give him a long introduction, but he's the main event. I will just say that he is fresh off the picket line as, as a strike, a striker, and he said he picked up an injury walking the picket line at Eastern Michigan, but their faculty walked out on strike, had, it looks like fantastic student support and just won a contract. So he's, he's, he knows he's not, he's not just someone that can do amazing financial analysis. He literally walks the walk on the picket line. Howard is an unbelievable friend to academic unions throughout the country. He's been a stalwart in A U P nationally. He has a J D, an MBA and a PhD. So he's, he's about as well qualified to do this work as we can imagine. And he's going to give an overview. What, what we're going to do is Howard will screen share. We will make the slides and video available later. And we'll also highlight some things for people who, who don't have the capacity to hear the whole presentation. So we can really get this word out. But Howard will screen share and walk us through the, through the slides and then, and then we'll, we'll go to a Q and A at the end and we expect to go till about 1:30 or just before. So thank you so much, Howard, for the work leading up to this and for what you're about to say. And we were just extremely grateful for, for this analysis. So thank you.
All right. Well, thanks, Becky. That's great. Appreciate your support as always and love being with you guys, been to Rutgers many times. And yes, Patrick and I have had this relationship for a very long time and he's great. Shout out to Sherry Wolf. I don't know if Sherry's here. I assume she is, but hello, Sherry, if you're there.
Yes, I am. Hi, Howard.
Hello. Thanks always for your support and many others. Troy, I think you're seeing you. If you guys want to ask, you know, during the presentation, there's something bothering you, you can put in the chat and I'll be, I'll look at chat and I'll, I'll try to address it, even though I know we get Q and A afterwards. But if something's like, where does that come from? Or I don't, you know, whatever it is, you want to say, that's fine. And I'll do that. And yes, I, my injury in the picket line was just pulling a hamstring because I just, I'm just can't walk fast enough. I guess with all the young people that are out there. But it was great. It was, it was, it was a lot of fun. We had great support from the other unions. As I said before, this is our first strike. I was president of the union. We went on a strike many years ago. But now we're A F L C I O, the recent combination of A U P and A F T, which you have had obviously for forever, but for us, it was fairly new and that made a huge difference in our success, bringing in all the other unions, having them all there for the different rallies with their signs, with their shirts, the different unions. It's hard to put into words what that means. And I see it here and it makes, it made all the difference in the world for us on the ground. So let's go. So let's go into it. Some, this is roadmap where we're at, overall conclude, what we'd be doing. Rutgers is in solid condition, financial condition. We'll look at some details, look at the bond rating, really get into enrollment and the state and the federal relief funds, which I want to talk about how the administration, not, you know, the, the upper administration, how they view it and what we learned from that. And then the biggest take I have from this, the, the data, it still surprises me all these years later, that over the last couple of years, we see staff down, upper level administration up. I, I'm not understanding how that continues to happen. But, and Rutgers Athletics, you guys know I'm a youth sports fan, but the news is not getting better. It's getting worse for Rutgers Athletics from a financial standpoint. And, and we'll talk about how the pandemic fits into that as well. So here are the overall conclusions. The Rutgers definitely is in solid financial condition. There's no doubt about that. They have reserves, solid reserves, cash flows, modest debt, increasing state support. And this quote is taken directly from the bond rating itself. And enrollment's been solid. There have been some ups and downs, but generally it's been solid even in the face of the pandemic. There was a significant decline in auxiliary revenue. Housing, dining, parking, athletics, student union, bookstore, et cetera. But the state money and the federal money certainly overtook that. We talked about the administration decline and then huge deficit in 21. But really before the pandemic as well. So it was a great year. 21 was a great year. So let's look at, so the first thing, this is a graph picture sort of of the way Moody's assigns bond ratings. They have nine variables that they use. The six ones with all the numbers are the empirical variables. Then they use these three non-empirical variables where they could basically just make up anything they want. Brandish, change of positioning, operating environment, financial policy and strategy. It's hard to quantify those because there is no quantification of them. But these others all have definitive numbers and Rutgers bond rating is in here. And you can see they have some variables that are very good and so they're excellent and some that are just very good. The very good is size, amount of cash and investments, and basically a measure, a metric of reserves. EBITDA, if I could stands for earnings before interest depreciation and amortization. And it's a measure of cash. It really is just a measure of cash flow. And even though it's not in the great category, it's still, these are still, it's still a solid cash flow performance. They bring in more cash than they spent. And there is a decent amount of debt, but certainly not that much. And debt coverage is certainly fine. So if you put all this together, this is a solid bond rate. There's no doubt about it. And this is the rating distribution of all the public and private universities in here. So Rutgers is where the arrow is. There's not that many triple A's. And you can see a vast majority are lower than that. So we get into the revenue. And the reason I, when I use the word medical, it's called various things in the financial statements. They call it patient care services. That's the phrase that they use. I just use the word medical just to shorten it, just at a convention, but that's what we're talking about, patient care services. And there's a lot of things that go into that is, as we know, I've certainly been around enough to know that that involves a whole bunch of things. So what we see here is the dip in revenue from 19 to 20, the pandemic, but certainly things really picking up with and without medical. So it's not like the medical revenues are driving everything, though certainly they've been going up. And this is, it's always good that revenues are going up. And here I'm looking at the main revenue sources over time. So bear with me a bit here. This slight decline in tuition revenue from 20 to 21 was due to a combination of flat, no, no increase in price and a slight decline in enrollment, but still pretty solid when you look at it going back to 14. This orangey line is patient and healthcare service. As you can see, it's gone from 500 million up to just almost doubling in a seven-year period, which is pretty impressive. Grants and contracts include all sorts of things. It includes research grants, of course, and includes contracts that the university has with all, a lot of outside entities. The blue line is the state appropriation just for operations, not the fringe part. You can see it was declined here and now it's up. And I'm going to look at, show you where this is going for 22, where it went for 22, the year that ended and the year we're in now for 23. And it's good. It's definitely, it's definitely going up just on the, it's just under 500 million for 23. The operating part for Rutgers. Student aid is money basically coming from federal Pell Grants. Auxiliary is this decline was people did not live on campus for a lot of that, a lot of that year. And athletics also lost a lot of revenue during that year. But you can see the code relief, which didn't exist before, 20, really picked up a lot of the auxiliary decline. So here I kind of condensed the graph a little more so you could just see through 19. Things were different then, but pre-pandemic, if you know what I'm saying, if that makes any sense. So, but things were still, so you could, I was going to put these, I, I was going to put these on the same page, but I tried to pre, pre, post pandemic, if you know what I'm saying. Do you guys get what I'm trying to do? Yes, no? Okay. That's what I was trying to do. I don't know how successful. All right. Bear with me here. I, I hate to present to this many people with something that looks like this with all these numbers, but could you hang with me? Just, I promise I won't take that long, but I really want to go into what's here. This is to me so important. It tells us that, oh, you know, I think four union, four different union presidents said before I spoke that they have the money. This tells us that they have the money. This is showing us all the money that they take in, in cash versus all the money they're spending out in cash and tuition and fees at the top. Here's the COVID relief funds. You see the big drop in auxiliary. The university is going to point to, oh my God, we lost all this money in auxiliary. But almost all of it was made up for with COVID relief funds with, as I'm going to show you, a huge amount came in, in 22. A huge amount. Yeah, Becky, I saw that. I had that, I have a little blur from the DoorDash article at the end. You gotta wait about 40 slides, 50 slides and I'll get to those. But when you look at all, let's look at the total, let's look at the bottom. I go back all the way to 14. You could see over 3.7 billion and the total revenues basically flat for the last couple of years. And here is where all the money goes out. And this includes everybody who works. This is payments for salaries and benefits of every, every employee, no matter what classification, everybody who works. And you can see that actually went down from 20 to 21. And we, we'll talk about employment. We were talking before about 321 and then we'll talk about it. Sorry about that. 322. 322 and we'll, we'll, we'll figure that out. And payments to suppliers, you could see that decline there. A lot of that was pandemic related and expenses for stuff, food, et cetera, that didn't exist, that went down in 21. And I even put interest on here. Moody's, and I'm allowed to do whatever I like, but Moody's does not include this interest payment in this cash outflow. The administration, having been in hearings with your upper level administration, I, I know what they said and know what they think. So they argued in one of these hearings years ago that to exclude this line is not right. We have to pay it anyway. And so I said, okay, if we're going to do that, can we at least include the investment income up here? And they kind of implicitly were not really saying it, not really agreeing totally, but they kind of said, okay. So Moody's does not include this, but I included it because your administration, there's no reason to, you know, to get in, I hope someday, maybe you guys will have me back and put in a room with them again. And we'll see, you know, to talk about this stuff. And they certainly didn't like the exclusion of that. So that's why I have it in here now. And Moody's does not. But regardless of that, the green at the bottom took in 3.7, spent 3.4 and change. Every year, every year, each and every year, you see positive operating cash flows, including paying for interest. So, and this is everything in and everything out. All right. Enough of that. Here's the graph. 21 wasn't quite the best year they've had in recent years, but those of you, the union presidents who are arguing that they have the money, this as much as anything is your best, is one of your, this and the reserve side I was about to show you are your best arguments. They have the money. They're generating these positive cash flows every year. And now the reserves, the, are the reserves and cash flows the same thing? No, because the reserves are not necessarily just a pot of cash, but they're represented by this increase in cash we see every year. These are increases. What you see on the slide here are increases on an annual basis, and this is building up over time. And you can see the level of reserves after 21 at one and a half B with a B, not M, B with a B billion is the highest it's been since the, and the reason I don't go back before 13 for this stuff is, you know, the structure and the merger and all that changed before that. So it's hard to compare what we had before 2014. And the restricted expendable part of the reserves, these are reserves that are set aside to pay off debt, to deal with future scholarships, that they want to make sure there are scholarship funds that are out there for low-income people from the state of New Jersey. And it's not like the dark green can be spent on anything, but it does tell us that their major needs, paying off debt, paying off of the capital, for the capital buildings that they took that out on are taken care of. The lime green is completely free. And you can see that's over $800 million. Oh my God. So if you guys, if the union presidents, if you're looking for direct evidence of do they have the money, which you all said they do and they do, look at this slide, look at these two slides here as your best evidence, if I could give you that advice. And I wanted to put it early in the presentation. Because I know how important that is to you guys. So then now we're going to look more detailed and more accounting-ish. This, I would not use as the slide to say that they have the money, but it's a nice balance sheet. They have assets all the way up here, debt all the way down here. And the blue line of the assets, the green line being the net assets and the red line being the debt. So you can see over $7 billion of assets, less than half of that liabilities. So in general, that's pretty good. And we're going to talk about, and so basically of this, when I, see that number that $4.3 billion? When I look at reserves, I'm sorry to go back again. I'm not saying that all $4.3 billion of reserves, a lot of that net assets are tied up in buildings and can't be spent, but there are one and a half billion dollars of total reserves and 800 million in totally unrestricted reserves. So again, a great story and it's good. It's good news. It's the best it's been. I make an adjustment for pensions. I'm not going to get into the, these slides are, I know there's a lot on them, but I think it's too much detail. The, the, this is the way I'll explain what happens. So Rutgers, like all public universities, starting in 2015, started putting on their books, on their balance sheet, the liabilities for state pensions. And they were always the responsibility of the state. They never belonged on Rutgers. So on Rutgers balance sheet, every year in Rutgers statements, financial statements, Rutgers themselves, the administration and the auditors, they tell us these numbers come from Rutgers. They say, this is what things really look like. So you can see the blue for 14. Nothing changed in the original, as reported and the truth in terms of unrestricted reserves. That's the $800 million, right where my cursor is there.
Excuse me. I'm very confused by the Y axes. In many of them, the, the numbers are not labeled. Are they thousands or millions or billions?
This is a billion dollars.
So, okay, a thousand is a billion.
Yeah, it's in millions.
So it, some of them are labeled, but some of them are not, you know, like 100,000.
This is a billion dollars.
So please just tell us what the units are each time. Thanks.
So, and so you can see the blues are the same. But then every other year, what they report is negative, but the truth is up here. That's the 800 million right there. All right. This is breaking down the assets. They have the cash and investments of just over two and a half billion dollars. That is the buildings. Capital assets are just the buildings. And you can see cash and investments went kind of flat and then a big uptick in 21. Capital assets, they just keep building more stuff. And then everything else is not very, the other assets are not very large at all. Nothing, nothing major here, but there you go. The reserves in context. So what I'm doing here, these are, again, this is all in billion, these were all in millions. These are the, that's the 800 million of unrestricted reserves. This is where Rutgers is. That's the total reserves. This is what, and that's a between an A and a double A level of reserve. This, if the level of reserves was here, there would be an A per Moody's. If it was here, it would be a double A. So Rutgers is between A and double A in reserve every year from 14 through 21 consecutively. That's pretty nice. And that's the triple A level. And Rutgers, I'm not claiming Rutgers has a triple A bond rating. University of Michigan, who's in the Big Ten with Rutgers, does have one. Ohio State is here. Michigan is there. Purdue is here. Indiana is here. Has triple A bond ratings and they have levels like that. But still, that's pretty good. Between A and double A is pretty good. Okay. So the data behind Moody's, this is just the way they score it. So you get a score for every, a letter grade for every ratio, every ratio has a number, low is better. And then every factor has a weight. And that's, this is how Moody's actually does their bond ratings. So Rutgers has a total score when you do all the math of 3.7 and 3.7 is in here. That's why you have an A, A3 bond rating because Rutgers score is in there and that's the way Moody's does the bond rating. Nothing, nothing big there. Now, this I took right from the bond rating and you can see the date on the bond rating is July of 2022. So it's two months ago, pretty recent. So strengths, large scale of operations, critical role in New Jersey educational framework, flagship and land great university. University leadership can use successfully plan and execute complex initiatives and grow research profile. They will increase already, this will increase already sizable financial reserves. So we show you the reserves being big. This is a fact. Large capital investment over the past five years without significant growth in debt. Challenges somewhat thin operating performance. That's the margin being in that A level. Flexible financial reserves compared to operating expenses and a high adjusted debt, a little, I, I, I don't think this is much of a problem. The state is not great. The state is not great. Is what the third one is, and the state has a long has a pension liability and they always, the, oh, we have to fix the buildings. Oh my God, the buildings are falling down. I, that's always, they always throw that in there. In general, pretty good. And that's where it all comes from. This is in, uh, their own words. Uh, this you see here is Rutgers' own words in their own statements. Financial condition improved. Operating revenues decreased, but offset by increases in contract revenue and health service. Operating expenses decreased quite a bit. Tuition, tuition revenue peaked seven, look how many students there are. It's just amazing how many students there are. And state appropriation increased. So I took all of this from Rutgers summary. I didn't change any of the words. Okay, now let's look at enrollment. Let's really break it down. I'm going to start big picture and then go level and then go at different sub levels of enrollment. So we're going to start big picture. This is headcount. All the campuses, you can see where I got the data from. And this is twenty twenty two. Let me put this in the chat to be clear. So twenty twenty two is fall twenty twenty one. Obviously, we're sitting here on September sixteen and there is full twenty twenty two enrollment data. It has not been posted yet. It's not official. I think that within three to four weeks, we'll have official fall twenty two enrollment data. There is some data on number of new admits, et cetera. That to me is not as important as where we actually wind up. So I don't know what, maybe some of you, I know some of you know where things are in twenty two. My guess is some of you definitively know where twenty two is. Maybe not in this big picture, but you know where it is for your, the unit you're involved with. Uh, but we'll know soon enough what's going on in uh, fall twenty two, which is fiscal twenty three. So you can see down here, the annual changes, slight changes the last two years, but the level, you can see the level here in twenty two is higher than it was pre pandemic. So I think, still think that's, given the size of the university, the incredible size. And the different, and three campuses slash four campuses. Uh, I think it's pretty impressive to have maintained this level of enrollment through what we've been through and through what your region has been through with the pandemic. So, okay, next level down is by campus. So going back couple of years before, and I just did it by campus. And what I have on the right here is that New Brunswick is roughly sixty one percent of the of the whole thing. Now sixty three percent of all the enrollment in twenty twenty two. And the others, obviously lower percentages. And we'll look into the changes, but just, this just gives you a, a visual of how the different campuses fit in. And you can see the different camps over time. Now we're going to look at the changes. So bear with me here. So we got, I know this is numbers. We have graphs, but I just want to show you the numbers first. And I, as an analyst, I'm not making any statements as to why. Uh, Patrick sent me something last night on, there are definitely issues at Camden and Newark this term with enrollment and students having trouble being able to sign up for classes due to issues with registration, et cetera. So these are, you could see the changes in Camden and Newark the last two years is what I've highlighted here. New Brunswick. You can see has increased every year. Uh, from going back five, six years, there's been an increase in New Brunswick every year. It was a big decline in RBHS here, but then since then it's been kind of flat. And these are the totals. So again, I'm not making any political statements. I'm just saying this is what is, and this is the graph of a longer term change. Those were the annual change. I think some, what I, to me, my experience with enrollment is focusing on every year's change. I think is somewhat problematical. To me, it's always better to look at a somewhat longer time period, which is what I've tried to do here on page twenty nine. So I broke it down into three time periods, sixteen to nineteen, nineteen to twenty two, and then the entire six year period by campus. And the black, the black bar that you see here is all the campuses put together. That's the black ball. And the blue bar being Camden, the white bar being Newark, the red bar being New Brunswick and uh, RBHS being this whatever you want to call that orangey thing. So you could see over sixty nineteen the three main campuses did well, but not so well here, except for New Brunswick. And overall, still pretty good over this six year period. But definitely different in the first three years versus second three years. That's, that's what that's changing. That's showing. Now I bring in enrollment undergrad grad. So before area, the four campuses, so to speak, undergrad, the four campuses grad and total undergrad and total grad. So I have in the note here, undergrad enrollment is down in twenty two, except for New Brunswick. That's you can see right here, that's, that's for, this first statement is three reds and one black in the chain from nineteen to twenty two. Interestingly, grad enrollment is up for both periods overall. You can see over that, so grad enrollment is up for both periods. That's this last row here. Grad enrollment is up from sixteen to nineteen and grad enrollment is up from nineteen to twenty two, driven by mostly New Brunswick. But a little bit also by Camden in terms of graduate students. So that's so trying to dig in as much as I can there. I have a picture of all this. So this on slide thirty one is a picture of total undergrad and total grad. And then the total, again, I use black for the total of everything. I think that was just easier. And you could see the grad enrollment, the white with the red bar around it. That's, if I can go back, that's this always being positive. That's why the whites, the two whites, not large, but still positive. In undergrad enrollment went up a lot here, not as much, didn't go down as much as it went up there. That's why overall we have growth in enrollment for this entire six year time period, which is pretty impressive. Okay. Now I look at the long-term changes by campus. And you can see RBHS is not, the enrollment changes uh, are not very large at all when looked at in this context. And Camden is, the oranges are nineteen to twenty two. The greenish ones here are the full sub-period. And New Brunswick has been up for all the sub-periods, both sub-periods and in total, of course. I next break down enrollment by residency. I found in doing a lot of these, and I've done a lot of these analyses over the last couple of years, that the drop in international enrollment may have been driving the total enrollment. There's some of that here. So let's look, just bear with, again, I'm sorry for the numbers, but you know, you guys are here, so I'm hoping you don't mind. So here's international enrollment over the six year period. Just bear with the, the chart here. Sixty four hundred to seven thousand to seventy three hundred, up to eighty one hundred. And then the big decline, obviously pandemic related from here to here. That's a big drop. And over this three year period, a drop of almost six hundred students, uh, in international enrollment. Uh, and most of that is graduate international enrollment, as you can see here. So the total enrollment drop over this three year period. It's not all international. This, I don't know if you find this surprising or not. But in this pandemic related slight drop in enrollment, more of it is coming from New Jersey than other US states. So I find, I found that interesting slash surprising this this change right here. These, I thought they would be the opposite, but New Jersey, the location of New Jersey, and I'm a New Yorker, so I get it. Is not isolated in a way like when I do Iowa, Iowa is, it's not the same. You know, obviously there's, it's much more condensed in the eastern part of the country in the mid, mid Atlantic, but still I found that interesting. And, but there definitely has been a story that the pandemic drove enrollment down due to national, but that happened to some extent at RU, but not it wasn't the entire enrollment decline. A lot of it is right here of people from the state of New Jersey. This just shows you the distribution of students and where they're from. So undergrads eighty seven percent, roughly seven eighths of students are from Jersey. Uh, and then other US states, international grad students, a much more diverse group in terms of where they're from. Uh, eighteen percent from other US states and fifteen percent international. Then you combine them, combine undergrad and grad, you get this here. And Rutgers obviously is such a large flagship university, you could, you could get things like this. So there's a long-term changes graphically in New Jersey. So here, again, the big enrollment, there's a drop in international, but there was a bigger drop in the number of students from Jersey. Pandemic related. And other US states kind of helped out. So this blue is from sixteen to nineteen, total enrollment went up by over three thousand students. This orange is from nineteen to twenty two, enrollment went down by almost fifteen hundred students. And this green is over the six year period. Enrollment went up by about two thousand students. So I'm, you know, I'm not making any statement. I think it's good for you to know all this. I think a lot of you do know it, but all right. So now I'm going to dig in by campus, by college. Okay. So again, bear with me, a lot of numbers here, but I assume there are people on the, there's a hundred people on this call, and I'm assuming there are people at all the campuses represented here. Uh, I can't imagine that that's not the case. So uh, I have not done this before, but I wanted to do it now to show what was going on. And again, I'm not pitting one college against another, one campus against another. I'm just trying to show you the numbers that you may have seen, but now I'm putting them some context on them. So this is Camden and the different colleges. Uh, and you could see the enrollment went up and from nineteen to twenty, and then I only have this data going back to eighteen, like, like by camp, like, uh, campus, by college within each campus. And she could see the total drop is driven by arts and sciences and business. Mostly in these last two years. I have different sub-periods here because I don't have data going back to sixteen by the campus. I have data going back to eighteen by the campus. By college, by campus, by college. So that's why this is, I want to explain why this is a little different than the broader numbers I was looking at before, where I had them through sixteen. So here, the, the, the affinities aren't all that different. So we see these drops right here. And then what's called university college, this, it's very small. And we see nursing and law showing increases. So this is Camden. Next is Newark. And again, every, every campus is different and these are the different colleges at Newark. And again, law is up. I'm a lawyer, so I'm happy about that. Uh, this business school written here, this, there. I don't know enough about the differences here. I'm just reporting exactly as it is presented on O I, O I R A P. Which is institutional research and planning. That's, that's all, it's the office of institutional research and planning. That's the, and those people tend to be non-political, by the way. I don't know them. Maybe I guess, my guess is many of them are union employees. And most of the people who work there are not political and they don't have an agenda of any sort. They, just people do their work. And so I, I don't quite, I, this is not any typo. I just took it exactly as it was written in terms of the two businesses. And you could see both of them show a decline in business over this sub-period and arts and sciences and very similar story, but slightly more pronounced than we saw in Camden. So percentage change. So the enrollment from eighteen to twenty in Newark went up six point six percent, then down ten point six percent. Thank you, Michelle, for that. I saw that in the chat. I did not know that. So, and then minus ten, six and twenty to twenty two, and then together almost a five percent decline from, so this, just a minus four point seven percent, if I may, is the decline from thirteen, six oh five to twelve, one sixty eight. All right. So let's move on. New Brunswick, oh boy. Okay. So big, 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 but and a lot going on. And this NB, I'm sorry, I should have written out the word New Brunswick. I, I don't know. Sorry about that. Did that last week. All right. Sorry about that. I should have written that. And there is a name to the school, the arts. Uh, I didn't give it, I didn't put, you know, a lot of these schools and colleges have names of donors on them, and I apologize for not putting those on. I'm not meaning any disrespect. Uh, yeah, we all know NB is New Brunswick. But for me, I mean, it's obvious for me, but you know, it's always, I like, I visualize like seeing it out. Okay. So you could see business is way up, graduate studies up in this time period, and everything is up. Everything up, both sub-periods and overall percentages, given the size, it's pretty impressive. I don't know the differences between why New Brunswick is having different enrollment experience in Newark and Camden. The, those are things I can't answer. Uh, but, and I'm sure many of you know this, but it has to be said because this is what the data is telling me, telling us. And when you break it down by college, uh, you see some difference, but really arts and science is down, which is always depressing. But, uh, most of the other colleges doing pretty well, but a lot of it driven by the increase in business and I don't know if there's mergers or whatever going on, but art, uh, the arts, uh, doing fairly sta- stable over the time period and there's, I always like to see, if I may, look at this one, management labor relations, because a lot of the work we do comes out of there. So it was good to see some increase there for the last uh, couple of years. You can see that right there. That twenty six is from five eighty seven to six thirteen. See that five eighty seven, six thirteen is that twenty six. So, so that's good. And then RBHS has fewer colleges and obviously very different names, very different places. And you could see it all here and fairly flat. Uh, up, but fairly flat. Yeah, folks, Isaac writes in the chat that folks, boy, with the pandemic, I certainly hope so. Uh, because the atmosphere out there is we need, we need, that's so important for so many reasons. And again, you guys could take this and for what it's worth, but this is all pretty solid. Okay. So a lot on enrollment. Apologize for the deep dive, but I think it's so much of the story. This is tuition price. And again, I did it by campus and through iPads. iPads does not have RBHS data in it. Everything is funneled to New Brunswick. Everything is New Brunswick. There is no RBHS in iPads. And that's where I got this data from. I do note up in yellow that the increase for the year we are currently in is two point nine percent over the numbers you see in the column I'm in now. And I'm going to show you the percentage increases in a second. So obviously these are the sticker prices. Uh, it's a lot of money to go to public university. My parents went to City College and, uh, I'll just leave it. The cost was, shall we say, nothing, which it was back then, but that was many, many, many years ago in New York. So anyway, these are the annual percentage changes and, uh, you can kind of put these two together almost. And you get about this and they, and the increase for twenty two to twenty three is where these, when you can see the, the difference among the campuses is hardly at all. So again, if I had, I guess I could have put twenty two to twenty three in here, but the official numbers weren't out yet, but it would be right where my cursor is. It would be just, it would look just like this. See these two nines? And I think maybe they went back to a pre-pandemic increase. I don't know if they did or not. They being the people who made those decisions. So, discount rate. Okay, let me spend some time here because I think you're going to get a pretty different story. From the administration, the upper level administration, when you, when we talk about discount rate. So the discount rate is. How much off the sticker price there is. And this comes directly from the audited statements, and you could see it's pretty flat at twenty percent. The the administration is going to claim it's a lot higher. Uh. It's not. I show you exactly how I got that twenty four point five percent. You can see that division here. They focus on the rate for first year undergraduate students, only just the real discount rate applied to all students. Uh. Then the change in tuition revenue and price over time. So the big one is tuition revenue. We have, this was the decline we saw in that red line going down in tuition revenue. Given this increase in price versus the D, I think the dark green bar. Is prob- my prediction is probably going to go up about one percent. Right where my cursor is. We don't know it yet. The year ended, but we're not going to get those results yet. The administration probably knows it. He ended in June of twenty two. My guess is that dark green bar is right there where my cursor is. Which leads us going forward. So here's the state appropriation. Let's just do nominal first, then we'll talk about inflation. So you can see it took a big hit during the pandemic, but certainly went up quite a bit after that. And then a little bit of a drop, but now we've got for twenty three, we've got a real big increase in twenty two to twenty three. I got those numbers from the budget, from the Rutgers budget. Now, inflation has become an issue. You could see years ago, the difference between nominal and adjusted for inflation was hardly existed. And using the New York, New Jersey. Newark, Jersey City, all that CPIU. You could see the when adjusted for inflation, the estate appropriation is not doing so good. Nominally, the appropriation is higher than it was back in fourteen, but just for inflation, it's not. So I think we could all agree that the state should probably try to hopefully do more. When you look at tuition and fee revenue versus state, families are being asked to do more and more. In the state. The state's not. Yeah, this is up, but still. This this gap, this is only nine years ago. Gaps more than doubled. Have you guys, you know, student debt? Why do you think there's a student debt problem? Look at this chart. That's why there's a student debt problem. So. So when I look at twenty two and twenty three overall. The budget had a dollar increase for tuition and fee revenue. The state appropriation was down, but then it's supposed to be up again in twenty three. When I look at these two revenue combined, I'm seeing really good things for twenty two and twenty three. So again, going back to those union presidents at the beginning. Uh. In terms of what Troy's just saying, this is, this is just the not the fringe part. This is just the operating part. And things looking good. I mean, going from four thirty seven to four eighty six, that's a nice, that's a nice increase. That's a nice increase. Okay, let's talk her funds. Confusing. These totals in yellow, I'm not including any funds that are going to students. It's only the discretionary part. So when you look at HERF. You have discretionary to students. The income, when I use the phrase income recognized, that means Rutgers has gotten the money and spent it in the year. So what happens is that some of the money that they were getting in twenty, they didn't spend until twenty one. Why they can't find, well, that's. That's a lack of will is what Sarah to. They're they're going to claim, so let me Sarah, let me address your question right here. They're going to claim. That this slide is why we can't give too much, because yes, this helped, but this is all going away. It it may all be going away, but it covered declines in auxiliary revenue and even tuition revenue that are now going to bounce back. When you look at these numbers, they are getting over the over the years, a hundred and sixty two million dollars. By the way. The data for this, this raw data with all this numbers coming, this comes from the audit statements. Here, I took this from the actual acts themselves. You can see I got a number slightly lower, but they don't. My point is they don't do it by campus. They combine all the campuses together. These acts, the money go into Rutgers. I mean, I'm sure the campuses get different amounts of money, but I, we, I can't see that. We can't see that. From publicly available data, but still. In discretionary money, a hundred and sixty two million dollars. I'm not including any student money here, no money that goes to students. This is federal money. There's also two other state pots of money. Gear governors, Governor Murphy, governors, education, emergency relief, and you could see over the two years nineteen million. And then what's called the CRF, the COVID Relief Fund, sixty million dollars came there. What last thing I want to point out? The art money, the American Rescue Plan, ARP, the American Rescue Plan, the one that was passed in March of twenty one. Rutgers, you see that income recognized zero? Rutgers got about a hundred and sixty million dollars in that, seventy five point nine million discretionary. As of the end of twenty one, they had not spent a single penny on it. So they got to recognize in the year that ended in June of twenty two, seventy five point nine million of of art money or HERF three money and fifty three million dollars. They get a recognized of HERF two money. When we, when you guys have me back, which hopefully this will will always have me back, when we look at twenty two. Because many of you will be still be bargaining. It's going to be even a better year because all this money came in. And enrollment was pretty was was really okay, and the state was okay, and all this money came in. The argument they're going to make is that. This is all going away. Yeah, it's stopping, but my response is as follows. It was a huge amount of money. It helped a lot. And it covered declines elsewhere that are going out and now rebounding. So that's just a lot of money, and I think, you know, I want all of you in, to me, this is an important part of the presentation was. In the in this slide especially right here, I I tried. To say exactly how much they were owed, when they got it, and when they're going to get it. So that's why I'm spending some time here on both the federal in yellow and the state in blue. And again, the yellow is just student is just discretionary money and nothing to do with the additional aid to go to students. So this twenty seven one, that twenty seven one, and that's seventy four two. That goes directly to students is not included at all in this yellow. Okay, and this were the estimates of these acts. So Rutgers actually got a little bit more. They got a little bit more for being an MSI. I'm at Newark got a couple million dollars. Each of the three acts for being an MSI, a minority serving institution. That's the way this act was written, and Newark, not the other campuses for whatever. I don't, I can't say.
I'll just jump in Howard and say that um, New Brunswick does not have the designation of minority serving institution. Um, Camden now does, but it's quite recent, so it wouldn't have given that eligibility, I believe, for these acts for folks that that are wondering about that.
Thanks, Becky. I did not know that. And yeah, that's important. Again, these things are all, you know, some people on this call, I think you guys should know all this stuff. Because they're going to make a big deal over the HERF money. I would go, it doesn't really matter. It matters quite a bit and helped them quite a bit. Alright, they're going to make a big deal about this. I think, again, I'm trying to trying to show, talk to you guys about the pushback you're going to get. From administration. Oh, you cash flows are up, reserves are up. They're going to look at this. They're going to say, oh, my God, it's auxiliary revenues are way down, but look at their auxiliary expenses. Their auxiliary expenses also went way down. And so, yeah, there's a gap of eighty million dollars in twenty one, but there was a gap in prior years, and the HERF money more than made up for that. So what I wrote here, Rutgers has and and or will receive a total of two hundred and forty two million in federal state discretionary relief funds. Oh, my God. Over this three year period, so. But the point I want to make here is, yes, the auxiliary revenues dried up in many respects, went down a huge amount, but so did their auxiliary expenses. So. I don't know what to make of this, just patient care revenues. Versus expenses, big surpluses, I'll just. Not much to say there. Okay, let's see where the money's going. Uh. This slide tells me that salaries, wages and fringes that they actually pay. Of all the expenses at Rutgers, three, this is in thousands, I should have put that, this is three point eight billion dollars, up to four point one billion dollars. Of the three point eight billion dollars, seventy two percent of it goes to. People. All people, all employees. That's now down to sixty seven percent. They're spending more on stuff. Not fringes, because fringes are in there. Stuff. A lot of it is grant is additional aid to students that they they brought in. But a lot of it is supplies and services and things of that nature, but still about two thirds of every dollar goes to people. And if they talk about a benefit rate being like eighty percent, that's the benefit rate, thirty one percent, which is salaries benefits over fringes over salaries. This is just a graph of. One way of reporting the expenses, what's called natural expense distribution. Salaries plus fringes. That's the sixty sixty seven, seven. That's sixty seven, seven is fifty one, six and sixteen one. That's a lot of money on stuff. I understand you get, there's a lot that goes on. It's a big, big place, three different, you know, three, four different locations. I understand that actually more than that, if you. Count of all, but I get it. Second way to do the expenses are what's called functional. This is another, just another way that. Universities report. Expenses. So. Uh, I'm waiting to get to athletics. I see no turn athletics in the chat. Instruction from seventeen to twenty one. Down one point six percent. These are expenses. Patient care up a lot, so those revenues, research up quite a bit. General administration, which can include, it's hard to know exactly what's in there. Uh, but certainly it's up twelve point three percent, a lot of a big increase in scholarships. OPEP stands for Other Post Employment Benefits, uh, retiree health, which. I'm quite sure how they're doing that, but. It's not much there. So I have here. I think this is easier to see, and the expense distribution, that means what percent of total expenses go to instruction. So again, I use. Med for medical, I'm shortening pay, it's patient care and patient services. I understand there's a lot that goes into that, but I'm just using the shorthand med. So this red of twenty two percent says of. Uh. The total expenses that Rutgers spent in twenty one, twenty two percent went to instruction. If you take the medical out of it, it's twenty seven percent. And you can see patient care services as an expense is nineteen percent of everything. It's when I take it out, it's obviously nothing. Research. Auxiliary, housing, dining, student union, parking. Conferences, hotels, athletics, general administration, that's the way they phrase it, plant depreciation, academic support includes both. Academic support staff, who are mostly unionized, librarians who are who are unionized. It also includes deans, who I don't believe in any bargain year. So. That's just the way this that particular item is. Uh, student services uh, is mostly. Not, it's not, it's not administrative at all. Scholarships. Public service extension and OPEP. So you get some very diverse places to where the money goes, but people think, oh, full time faculty get all the money. Well, obviously not. Alright. This really gets you. You got administration of twelve percent. Instruction down to. Just leave it there. We got more on that. Okay, this is. The salaries. That are. In the budget. So again, I'm using the Rutgers budget. You see, I got twenty two and twenty three here. Looking at it, the salaries paid in total to all employees, New Brunswick, Newark, Camden, RBHS, and central meaning central administration. That's a lot of money to be paid to central administration. What's should bother all of you. Maybe it does, and maybe it doesn't. Is that central administration gets fourteen point eight percent of the total salaries. That percentage is increasing every year. The percentage to Camden and Newark. Single digits and stable, a lot, obviously, for all the people that work in the health system. And then when you look at this, it really, when you put it in a graph like this on fifty eight. It just, it's, it shouldn't, but I don't know. Does it bug you guys at this, at central administration, their salaries? I don't know. Maybe it doesn't bug you. Yes, no, alright. Doesn't bug you, okay. Uh, I don't think there's very many union people in here. I don't think there is any. Some, but I don't think, as we'll show you the salaries or what they are, we'll show you this. Okay, now here. These are all the different functions that are in the Office of Institutional Research and Planning. They're not quite. The mapping in to iPads, they kind of do. Uh. And they kind of do. And. Uh. And what, so management, I. I understand that the administrative union here, and years ago, I actually met with that group. I don't believe. That this category includes any union members. I just don't believe it does. And. That's why I highlighted and green. I'm fairly certain it does not. And you can see I have something about libraries. I can, archivist, curators, museum technicians, librarians and library technicians, we were talking about that group, those groups before. And. You sitting there at home. I imagine if I'm you, I'm sitting there, where do I fit? Where am I in here? I I'm not, there's no faculty. The faculty I have is separately. This, I'm just focusing on staff right now. I want to focus on staff first. And so you as staff, you have to figure out where you fit. I can't imagine you're in here. I just don't believe it. I just don't believe any of you are. That is my belief. And you guys may have a different thought, but I don't think that's accurate. I think none of you are here. So all of you are in various other categories. And so here's Newark. And you can see there's management kind of flat down a couple over this time period. And overall. A decline of eighty six staff people over this time period at Newark, enrollment down six hundred, going back to Camden, a decline of sixty staff people, a small decline in enrollment. And I'll leave this up for the people at Newark just for another second. I know we have time, but and 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 again, you're going to keep these slides. But. I understand how you want it, you know, you're interested in where you're at, of course you are. Alright, New Brunswick. You can see the number of managers gone up. Almost, you see how almost all the other employment categories going down? Come on, this is, this should tell you the story, right? I mean, come on now. Why? Why? Is this happening? Only you can answer. I mean, no, you can't answer. Only they can answer this. And you could see enrollment up, total staff down in New Brunswick. And I'm sure many of you on this call are in front of New Brunswick. And lastly, uh, RBHS. Again, I have managed, all, almost all the employee groups are up here because the medical side of things is increasing so much. But let's summarize all this. So let's. Bear with me. Come on, we're almost, I promise you we're almost done. So summary of all staff Camden. Down sixty over this. Eighteen to twenty two period changes for eighteen to twenty two. Newark down eighty six, New Brunswick down three twenty seven, RBHS of total staff down. One point seven percent when enrollment's going up. Okay? That's all staff. Now we're going to look at management versus everyone else. This is the slide that really should get your goat in my estimation. So at Camden. From eighteen to twenty two, there was an increase of two management employees, all other staff down sixty two. At Newark, a decline of two managers, but a decline of eighty four all other staff. At New Brunswick, an increase of ten management employees, but a decrease of three thirty seven others. At RBHS, an increase in both management and everybody else, but the increase in management percentage wise is bigger than everybody else. So over this four year period, we've seen an increase of fifteen manager, all of the staff down to fifty six, and the percentage changes well, and that's the picture that. This is the percentage changes you see on this graph. Really is amazing, if you think about it. Management, this is management at Camden going up thirteen point three percent. This is all the other staff at Camden going down ten point four percent. You guys all okay with this? No thoughts on this? Okay. Yeah. You guys with me? You guys understand what I'm doing here? I just, I don't want to, is everyone good here?
Yeah, this is fantastic. Well, I know there are going to be a lot of questions at the at the end, and I think it's um, it's confirming what a lot of people have. Felt and known in getting their work done, but seeing the numbers really clearly and objectively is is just fantastic.
The administrative bloat slide, and I talked about the slides in terms of eleven and twelve, those slides on cash flows and reserves, this one right here really. On the change of administration for so all the staff would really get me. So here I changed the slide. So here I changed the slide, so I got archivist, curators, museum technicians, most of the changes are in the library technician, but some in the library that definitely declines in all of this. Uh, I have a special place in my heart for librarians. Uh, my wife's mother, uh, was very dear to us and passed away recently. She was wonderful and a librarian and our kids were autistic and she was instrumental and all that. So I've always, librarians have always been pretty important to me and us, my family. So I'll just leave it there. That's why I did it, to be honest with you. You want worse? Okay, more salaries. All right, again, by camp. Now, this is by iPads. They don't put the salaries on O A R P. The, the Rutgers institutional research plan does not put that. I know the salaries are in a different place in a different book, but I like this because they're reporting it, the administration's reporting it, that office is reporting it to iPads. And it's the way we could compare it across time. So the Camden, the average manager at Camden is making what you see here. Newark, what you see here, New Brunswick, what you see here. So they're increasing and their salaries are increasing. So, yeah, librarians are great and obviously, like I said, a big part of my family. And look at this, I mean, I don't know. Okay. Here's more. This is the change in managers, all other staff salaries. So I just have management and everybody else, the dollar increase at Camden from eighteen to twenty-one. The average salary went up twenty-eight thousand dollars where the staff increase was less than five thousand dollars. At Newark, seventeen thousand and almost eighteen thousand, the average staff went up only fifty-nine hundred. At, that was at, I'm sorry, that's New Brunswick. At Newark in green, seventeen thousand increase in management, twenty-eight hundred increase for staff, and then you put everyone together, eighteen thousand increase for management versus a fifty-five hundred increase. This guy here is fifty-five hundred for staff. This is all campuses, all the different employee groups as they're reported by iPads, they use the phrase librarians, they do combine them and they call that, they combine all those when they do the average salaries and iPads. And, well.
Howard, I just want to clarify one thing on the, on the increase in average salary. It doesn't necessarily mean your dean got a fifty thousand dollar increase. It could mean they hired a bunch of new associate deans at higher salaries. So the average for the people in those positions, I just want to, because a lot of people who've been here are thinking about, you know, not getting a pay increase or getting a modest pay increase.
Let me, let me go back to that, what Becky said, that's actually. Can I go back to that, Becky?
Yes, please.
When you to me, Becky, I, I wasn't clear enough about this. It's not just the salaries, it's the number of people that are going up.
Yeah.
Look at the creep at Camden, fifteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen. Look at New Brunswick, two fifty-five, two fifty-eight, two sixty-four, then down, but still they're increasing. There's more of them.
And they are, at the same time, I know in, uh, in Camden, being told they cannot hire faculty cancelling searches because there's not enough money while the number of, of people in management, the headcount's going up.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's just, don't give us, okay, now, so we've done all the staff stuff now, I'm, I'm almost at the end, now we're going to do part-time. We do faculty, I'm going to start with part-time faculty, PTL group. And always have a great affinity for that, you know, my lone associate with Karen Thompson. Obviously not there anymore, but, uh, she was great and knew her and she was with us for years.
Karen's still here with us and very active in our adjunct union, so we're great.
Oh, great, we'll tell. Karen's great, I didn't know she was still with us.
She's probably teaching right now.
Well, tell her, say hi, she was great, always, always great with us, supported me at A U P when things were bleak and people were not thinking that I wanted to, we wanted to do all this A F T stuff and uh, she was one of the people that stood with me and I, you know, you know, you don't forget people who do that kind of stuff for you. Uh, and she, she stood up when she didn't have to, so. That makes a difference. And she meant a lot to me personally. So I, I, I don't know what you guys think about this. I know the part-time lecturer president spoke earlier, uh, the security. I mean, when you, when I see this, okay, me as an outsider, when I see thirty-four hundred to three thousand to thirty-four hundred. That means to me, people, a lot of people were not brought back and then brought back again. That's a lot of uncertainty in people's lives. And I don't know how you guys feel about that, but that's what I'm seeing here when I look at the part-time faculty numbers. And you see, look at it right here. This is what I, again, this, this big drop, and the administration will say it's pandemic, pandemic, pandemic. Uh, so and then a lot of the change for the last, for the last fiscal year. So I wanted to get to, and so this is the annual and long-term changes in part-time faculty. So this is from increase. Decline there, big decline in your bargaining there. Increase there, but not making up there. So over this four-year period, there's been a decline of twenty or fifteen people. Uh, yeah, so you, so you guys in the, in the PTL unit see this, you know, you felt it, now I'm showing to you explicitly uh, what you see. So we go to the full-time faculty and the story here is a story everywhere. A decline in tenure tenure track and an increase in non-tenure track. Obviously, it's not saying anything bad about non-tenure track people. I was certainly one myself for many years. And, you know, we, we've all been there. But you know, less security and all those things and less money. So your administration acts like other administrations, upper administrations in that, and you can see the tenure track is down at all the places and non-tenure track is up at all the campuses. And that's a graph. Okay, we're finishing. You guys know I love sports. Patrick and I, you know, Patrick's a Philly fan, I'm, you know, I, I do not. Okay, if Patrick, I love Patrick's on the call or not, but let, just, I promise thirty seconds. So last night, they have all the Clement, Roberto Clemente Award winners at the Met game at City Field and they announce them before the game. And Jimmy Rollins gets announced the X, the booing was so loud, which is so awesome to see a Philly get booed at City Field. I'm just saying, okay, enough of that. All right, sorry, Patrick, but I had to say that, sorry.
No worries, I think, I'm sure he appreciated it.
He laughed, he was good about it, Patrick. He had a good natured way about it, he was good about it, so. All right, so this, okay. This is going to be tough. I mean, my view on sports is as follows with Rutgers, never should have gotten the Big Ten, it was a bet they never should have made. The expenses that they're going to have to keep spending to keep up with the Ohio States and Michigan are never going to be covered by the revenues that they hope to achieve even through T V. Uh, it's just never going to be there. It was a bad bet and it's been proven to be a bad bet from day one. And we, I could say we have been saying that. And Sherry, I know you've been saying, we've been saying this from day one. And now what happened last year, they're going to say, oh, my God, this big drop in twenty-one was simply because of the pandemic. You know, the twenty-one year was when basically no one was at their games. Okay. Look at all this red ink before the pandemic. Before the pandemic. They were running these huge deficits each and every year. So it's not like the pandemic, this drop, the expenses didn't go away and the revenues did, but even before the pandemic, these deficits, huge amounts of redic every year. And so the yellow in this is the individual revenues, the student fees. A student fee is a student pays money out of their fee, a percentage of the student fee goes to the Department of Athletics at RU. Whether those kids, those students go to the games or not. They have to spend, they are supporting athletics, whether they like sports, believe in sports, go to games or not. This is the rest of the university propping up athletics because athletics doesn't generate the revenues. The direct revenues of, I have, you see, I have the word revenues in quotes here, these are not real revenues to the outside world. This is all inside, this is the subsidy. And so these are revenues to the outside world and the dreaded other. Ticket sales, okay, they basically went to zero this last fiscal year, but it's not like, I mean, I went back all the way to oh-five here just because. It's not like there's no history of it. I grew up in New York, okay, a hundred years ago. Rutgers football is just not part of the culture. It's, it's just not and never will be. And, you know, Seattle, he's back, he's he wins some games, you know, there's some people in the stands, but it's never been contributions. They're okay. Yeah, the TV money has gotten better, but not nearly enough to cover what they're spending, which is here. A hundred and eighteen million dollars. You know, since they went to the Big Ten, you know, they, they, they have to keep, they have to spend this money to compete with the Big Ten. Or else they're going to lose every game, or so they think. And coaching staff, the salaries you see are more than doubled from sixteen to twenty-one, you know? And maybe there's good reasons for that. I don't know what to say.
I'm going to ask you, Howard, if we can maybe, um, I don't know if you want any concluding remarks, I think we're gonna.
About done.
Yeah, and we want a couple of minutes for questions.
Okay, so here's, this slide is the revenues, look at those ticket sales, that's a, that's like right there, twenty-one, not covering expenses. And thirty-six percent of the expenses have to be subsidized by the students and all of you at Rutgers. Of the hundred and eighteen million dollars, forty-two million has comes, is, is, is not supported by the athletic department itself, they're not self-supporting. This, uh, we don't have twenty-one yet, we will next month, USA Today, I am a subscriber to USA Today, so I will get the data. I added UCLA, USC is a private school, so they're in there, you know, UCLA and USC in the Big Ten. Rutgers had the large, this is twenty, not twenty-one subsidy, twenty-one subsidy is forty, is forty-two million. I'm sure it'll be the largest when that comes out, but the largest subsidy by far of any school in the Big Ten. And last slide, I promise, uh, you guys, Becky, you were in court in all these articles, so you guys know about. I mean, I just read these things and just so I'm done, sorry.
Thank you so much. Now, Howard, this is fantastic. Um, I will, uh, let's stop screen sharing so we can see faces, what I want to, we just have a few minutes. I would love for, um, if, uh, anyone has questions, uh, you can use the hand raise and I'll call on you with members of our budget and policy committee, um, have particular questions, we'll of course have a lot more time to dig, dig into this and we'll have video of this presentation and the slides for you guys all to, um, share with your colleagues who weren't here, but, um, if people have questions, we have, we have, uh, over five minutes left and I'd love to, yeah, definitely pick Howard's brain. So Michelle Gettleman chairs our university budget and policy committee. I'm going to spotlight you briefly. Um, and we'll see if you need to screen share again to answer, Howard, you certainly can.
First of all, wow, thanks. I'm not going to take too much time to thank you, but this is so powerful and great, thank you. Appreciate that. One, one thing that you didn't talk much about is capital spending and building. I don't know if that came up in your review at all and how that fits into the financial strategy.
Yeah, I, I'll tell you why, because it wa, it wasn't, the last time I presented, it was in there. There wasn't, the, the level of new building was not nearly what it was a couple of years ago. And I had, I, I had the slide that I had last time, people versus buildings and I, I'll be frank, I did it again and it didn't, the difference was not as stark as it was then. I mean, I certainly yeah. I certainly looked at it, they, you know, when I was at Rutgers last time, which, which is nineteen, there was, you know, the, and we, I went to, I went, I was there for a couple of days. The construction was unbelievable, the level of construction. Is there less now than there was three years ago? Or is it still, they're building everywhere?
It's not as much in the heart of campus, but, um, we know they just got about a hundred million from the state for more, for especially a football practice facility.
That I saw in the article, I mean, that's, yeah, I, I saw, I mean, that, that, that's just, yeah, I that state money going for a football practice facility. I'm a big, that's not, that's not the right thing. That's just not, I'm sorry, that's not the right thing. But you guys may have a different opinion, maybe someone else, you guys may feel differently about that. So I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that, sorry.
No, that's great, that's helpful. Other questions, if anyone wants to, um, raise, raise their hand?
Have they broken, by the way, have they broken ground in their practice facility? Have they started building it?
I do not believe so. As Christian O'Connell says in the chat, they have done work on updating what we used to call the rack. I believe it's now Jersey mics. Uh, we have a lot of naming rights, uh, given away, but without the income that you expect to go with.
I get the Big Ten Network here, I've watched every game and I've watched the, I, I, I know the rack, I get it.
Yeah. Um. I guess one question I have is how should we think about the increase in, um, healthcare revenues? It's sort of this massive profit.
It's a good question.
What do you, what do you think about that?
That's a, that's a really good, I, I should have, okay, so what they'll say, Becky, I think what, a lot of what they're going to say is, look, so much of those increases in reserves and cash flows are due solely to the healthcare system and the profits there, and those were not allowed to spend them anywhere and they had to be plowed in. First of all, the not allowed stuff is not true. They could do whatever they want with it. But the way I look at it, it's like here at U of M, we, you know, I work with all the unions here, we have a similar thing here, and we get the same argument here. It's one place, Rutgers. And I think trying to, the university wants to silo everything. They want to say Camden. You have enrollment being down, we're not going to, we're not going to authorize any hiring because your enrollment is down. And we're not going to take any money from here and put, it's one, you know, these walls that they claim exist, they are all self-imposed. And the, the more, my advice is the more all of you think of Rutgers as not Camden and Newark and New Brunswick separately, but one place, I mean, that is your motto, but you got to live it. And I could tell you again, sorry to go back to U of M, the unions at U of M G only, or the graduate and lecture union, they really worked tirelessly to get membership up for Dearborn and Flint to get the resources that those, those, they said the same thing to missions, oh, your enrollment's down, we can't hire anyone there. Well, that's because you don't put any resources into those places. That's why, it's a self-fulfilling prophecy. And so if you think of Camden and Newark, not as Camden and Newark, but part of Rutgers. I think that really helps and the hospital is also part of Rutgers. We're all, it's all one place. This is, I mean, I'm not just saying this to be nice, it's an amazing place, seventy thousand students. Four billion dollars coming through. I mean, this is an enormous place. And they want to silo you. I'm telling, that's the way they want, and they want every one of you to think only of your own silo. But you guys are here together today and look at all the events, I went to one of those links that Alan put up. You guys have all these events, you guys know each other from different, don't some of you know each other from different? You know, who are not all on the same, you know, geographically, it's hard for people in Camden and, and Newark, obviously I know the geography, it's not easy, but the more you guys, Becky, think of yourselves as one financially and otherwise. That's the way that they are going to continually try to silo you. That is the way they are going, may, maybe I'm wrong about that, but I think that's their, that's always going to be their approach is. Newark, you don't get a new faculty member until your enrollment goes up.
I think that's right, and I think.
That, but maybe.
The way, the way the campuses are being essentially taxed to fund central priorities, including including athletics and including what should be libraries, but is never sufficient, is a choice. And so how much you tax Newark and Camden and say, no, you don't have any money left, that's a choice. So on that note. Um, you know, one thing that I think is, is just amazing in doing something like this is how unified we are. We're across all the campuses, we have Newark, Camden, New Brunswick, RBHS right here, um, listening to what you're saying, and then we have this wonderful coalition of unions, and I think we are, uh, what we, what we will get, we will get because, um, we are well-informed. But primarily because we are united and we are organizing together. Um, so I cannot thank Howard enough. If you have enjoyed what you've learned today and you think your colleagues can benefit from it, please, please, please tell them to come on Monday. Uh, we'll, we'll hear from Howard again. He's extremely generous to, um, run through this presentation more than once so that people on different schedules, uh, can have the opportunity to hear it. And, um, we'll be together in person outside Alexander Library, um, and that will be, that will be, uh, fantastic too. So thank you so much, Howard, and thank you to everybody, uh, who made this, made this happen.
I'll see a lot of you guys again on Monday. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Bye, everyone.